You would want for your community. So, this plan really very much is now a tool for you.
Is the pool in the downtown district?
It's on the edge of it.
It's not in it though?
It's not, it's not in a study district because we study business so property.
No, but I mean it isn't in the downtown district.
No, but the school is. The school and the parking law and those public facilities, the public safety building, that is in the business district.
Okay, so I just wanna, I wanna be clear that I wasn't reading it incorrectly.
I did get copy of the, your letter to the selectmen and explanation of what the, your mission statement was and your goals. And the issue I have is that, well, I've got here written down here. HTC's stated goals include funding the downtown master plan, land use development, developing the downtown septic study, and promoting the economic development of areas beyond the downtown. All planning functions which should be more appropriately presented by the planning board. Seems to me that that's, it's, these are all planning board issues. And so, why you're reporting to the selectmen and not to the planning board doesn't make sense to me.
He had to go before the selectmen to request funding, financing.
Well, that, it was.
That was, that was a special, a different piece. That was for financing.
The financing should be coming from a warrant that goes to town.
That's exactly right.
And that's fine.
That, that.
If it's just for the financing part of it, but that can be supported still by the planning board. In fact, I think it should be supported, that, you know, if you come to the planning board and say, look, these are things that we wanna, wanna do, you know, we're, we're on your team.
Which, good Rob, Rob, we will. That's what this is about.
Everything seems to be we will, you know?
No, 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 no. We, we haven't gotten to the point of bringing the bylaw changes yet. We, we just got this plan a week or week and a half ago.
You're sending letters and you're doing things to the selectmen, you're.
I, I didn't send, I didn't send, I, the only reason we sent a letter to the selectmen was to request the warrant article and the meals tax money, as we did last year and year before.
Did you not get your charter from, through the selectmen?
No, it came from the citizens of the town and it had to be approved by the state legislature.
And who, who set that up?
Out of the town's citizens, don't it?
I'm telling you.
Who set that up?
Town meeting.
The Economic Development Committee in conjunction with the selectmen.
In conjunction with the selectmen?
Decided.
Why was there no, nothing that came to the planning board for it?
Well, I can't answer that question, so.
Well, it started, I can't, because it started from the master plan. And the master plan, as a result of wanting to create additional initiative, said, let's form a downtown development committee. And that was what the selectmen were to appoint, about five, there's an agricultural soils committee, there's a bunch of other things. And they, they did, and they complied with the master plan. So now we got disaggregated some of the work that, planning board doesn't have time to take care of all of those things.
But we should still have oversight too.
Well, we were trying to enlist more people. You've got two people on that board. We only have one on the community preservation committee. Maybe we should have them report to us, and I just don't, don't, I don't, it's megalomania to me to have everyone report to the planning board. We're trying to initiate new ideas and new people getting involved.
But we're not, as a, I feel, as, as a member of the planning board, I'm not getting information about all these other things that are happening in town. And I think the only way to, to make sure that we do get that information.
Well, you've got two representatives who can report to you.
Who can report to us, but what have we gotten? That's what I'm saying. That's part of what I'm saying.
Then criticize that, but don't criticize the organization necessarily. Because I'm on the patent committee, for example.
Yeah, yeah.
And I try to tell you whenever there's something is being initiated.
Right.
But.
You, you guys ask for the HTC to report every so often, and we've done that at least a couple, two, three times now.
Yeah.
I did ask for, for something in writing, and I have never gotten anything written.
Which was not that long ago, right?
We had this discussion, both of you.
So you can.
I'll, I'll disseminate this to everybody then.
They got that email.
Just send out an email.
But they got, it was part of the.
That's where I was reading from.
Meeting package.
I'm saying, no Christine, I'm just saying, this is not new. I have asked, in the past, I've asked in the past if we could have something in writing because when people ask me about what's the planning on the downtown, I go, I don't know. I don't know.
Send, send you the minutes.
So it is, it, I look like an idiot. Now, the fact that this thing is on the planning board's site, and people say, so Claudia, what do you think of the plan? I go, I, I don't know, I have to go and look at it, is not appropriate as an elected official.
And if you're doing.
But, hold on, just, just one second, one second.
Yeah.
We've talked, Rick and I have both talked about the MAPC, the grant, everything I just mentioned, the four public workshops, we've talked about it here.
Yep, yep.
Okay? We invited everyone to those meetings.
And how many people, how many people on this board came to the meetings?
I did.
I did too.
So that's pretty important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have, we have not.
Like Claudia, did she go down?
We have not.
No, well, you know.
We can't.
I can't, I can't, I can't change, I can't change how you.
Hey Rick, Rick, let's don't, let's don't play the game, let's don't play that game, okay?
Don't, don't change how you feel.
I'm just saying, it would be nice to get something in writing. And it would also be nice to have some sense, and this is not megalomania, but it would make sense that the HTC does, has some reporting responsibility to the planning board. Because at, at the end of the day, it's the largest planning of this town the next five years is what's happening downtown.
So if we sent you the minutes, would that be good?
That would be good. That's, that's helpful.
I don't care how you do it. I don't care how you do it, but something in writing is nice to have and ever before.
But, but, but it does not change the.
Well, Claudia, no Claudia, I'm sorry, you don't get to stand up and criticize the reporting.
I'm not criticizing you. No, I'm not, I'm asking, I am asking you.
Yes, you are. You are telling us that you are not happy.
And you've received.
You are not happy with the communication.
This is the first thing.
You are not.
Yeah, but you, you didn't ask for this that long ago, and we've given verbal updates.
How long ago did I ask for it?
Couple of months.
Claudia, we're trying to comply with your request. Like this board, we are volunteers. We have a part-time staff. We are trying to do many things at the same time. We're not consciously excluding anybody. We're happy to send you the minutes. We're happy to sit down with you and talk to you about what's going on, if you'd like a personal briefing. There's just so many hours in the day and so much information that we can get to each individual member. So if you have a constructive suggestion, now how we can communicate better to you and make you more comfortable, then let's do it. I just don't like these broadsides.
Let me, let me paraphrase something. I've been trying to, I, I made a pledge at the last land boards meeting that I would be paying particular, the planning board would be paying particular attention to the Gulf Station operation. And you're heavily opinionated in that, which you and I happen to agree on.
Yeah.
Can you imagine that?
I know.
And it was agreed by this board that it would be better that you and Brian tackle Cumberland Farms. And then I got it back from Christine, which was quite appropriate, that Bill Geisness, is it?
Geisness.
Guy, guy.
Bill Geisness.
Geisness. Because the two of you might have to vote on something, it would be better that he, he tackled Cumberland Farms. But that's the last I've heard of it. And I've, and I've asked for the last three meetings, I've put it, I've reported a report from the HTC. Now, I'm not criticizing, please, I'm, I'm trying to help move the ball along, all right? Don't, don't go get angry with me.
I'm not.
Because I, because I, I want something.
I'm not.
It's not me that wants it, it's the process that needs it to, to.
Right.
To keep my pledge to the land boards, which is internal pledge to the town.
Got it.
I wanna, I want, the planning board wants to be, my object of the planning board is to get out in front of the Gulf Station thing so that we don't end up with something horrible.
Yeah, I agree.
And that's, that's the only go, I don't get anything personal out of it, except Sam that runs it's a good guy, you know?
I couldn't agree more.
So how, how, how is the planning board gonna get a report, an up-to-date report on the, on the, on the, on the Gulf Station?
Well, in fact, the Gulf people took off on their own. We, you know, made some inquiries about having discussions, and they had been doing a lot of planning on their own. And the, before we knew what was going on, they contacted Christine and said, we have a plan, we would like to talk to you about for the renovation and expansion of the Gulf Station. And they wanna make a formal submission to the planning board of that plan.
When?
March.
March. So they're going to come to the planning board with a complete set of drawings, schematics, diagrams.
What about the soft sell? That was why you wanted to intervene before they came?
Well, they, they were way down the road. We were like in catch-up mode.
Yeah.
They were, you know, we're going, would you like to talk? And they're going, oh, we're, you know, we didn't pursue it because we had several other things going on. And they said, we've got a plan coming, and it'll be coming before the planning board. And so we said, okay, so, we're not gonna intervene. We're gonna wait until they come before the formal body to present.
It would have been nice if the board was informed of that process, of that timing.
Well, we just found out about it.
I mentioned it. You know what, Ed? We, we have talked about this at planning board meetings. And you've asked, and what I said was that we had Bill Geisness on the HTC to be the person to reach out to a property owner because these two are board members and might permit something.
Yeah, I know, and I agree. I have no problem with that.
But Bill, in, in all honesty, Bill and I were both waiting for the consultant's report. It's easier to pick up the phone and call a property owner and say, we have a vision, oh, but it's not in print yet. You know, we were waiting for the consultant to finish things up. And the consultant was delayed for two weeks, processing plans. When the Hurricane Sandy money came in, it delayed some things at the state level because those people needed their money. And I told the consultant to help the people with the Hurricane Sandy funds, and we could wait two weeks. So January, the report came out at the exact same time Cumberland called staff, which is normal function. They call, and I said, by the way, can you look at this plan online? This is our vision, these are our design guidelines that we're looking for in the future, and this is where we wanna redo a crosswalk. This is a cornerstone piece in our downtown. They quickly looked at all of that. Within that week, they met with myself and the building inspector to go over dimensional requirements, site plan review requirements. They'll be submitting something that I think you'll all be very pleased with. I went through the file with them on the Gulf Station sign and canopy issue. Um, all of these things at a staff level, because you get to choose the permitting, but I just, I provide them with what you have produced for visions and documents. So if that's happening.
We can, we can, we can't on this board work in a vacuum.
But you're not. Your visions are there for the developer. When they call, that's what I do. I say, this is what they want.
But, but we're, we're part of that.
You're right. You're gonna, you're gonna have control over it.
You are. You, you're creating that. All your ideas are in there.
But I don't wanna be after the fact. I don't wanna after someone build something ugly there.
You're not going to be after it. You're gonna be in front of it.
No, they've already got a hit you.
And you, as a permit reviewer, you have a specific role when it comes to.
The, the, the LEC of the, of the Gulf Station tells me there's a million dollars being spent by, by Cumberland Farms on, on a, on a, on a new design, building a new prod, product on the back of the property.
Yeah.
All right, now, and I reported that here.
Yeah.
All right?
That was a long time ago.
Now, that was a long, yeah, a long time ago, months ago. And, and here we are, and I'm, I'm just terribly afraid. And, and Rick, you, you and I should be hand in hand on this.
We are.
And is terribly afraid that there's gonna be some great ugliness built there, and you and I are gonna be saying, what the hell happened? And that's what, that's what I wanna correct.
I understand your concern, and I haven't seen their formal plan yet. I've only been referred to, say, look at Mendon's development.
Met Way in Lexington.
And Lexington as what they're proposing.
Isn't it Penn Pumps?
No.
Uh, this is going to come before the board. They're gonna have to make a presentation to, look, I guess you guys gotta understand, I actually have a full-time job. I serve on two boards. I have a primary care for an ailing brother.
I have no doubt your dedication, your dedication is enormous, and I appreciate that.
Okay, I don't have a lot of time to sit and hold your hand and give you all the information.
No, we're not asking, we're not asking.
That's not polite, that's not polite. That's not polite, Rick. That's not polite. Please don't say something like that.
Don't, don't start on that. There isn't one of us here that doesn't have, have some.
That's not polite. That's not polite.
Well, wait, 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 wait.
Now, let me, let me finish with, if any one of us has, every, every human being over fifty years old has got some kind of a cross that they're bearing.
Yeah.
And, and I'm sorry about your brother, I'm sincerely sorry about you, and I've, and I've indicated to you that I, that I am. But the fact is, I work seven days a week. I have a job the same way and so forth.
Right.
And, and I'm, I try not to whine about it, and I try to meet my obligations.
Right.
I'm saying, if there is a way to smooth out the reporting, call it reporting, calling it information passing way of improving what we're doing, then let's do it.
And I, and I think, can I make one? And I made the suggestion.
Can I make a suggestion here?
Yeah.
Because it seems to me that, it's back to what I initially was saying, which is, if your authority is the selectmen and not the planning board, then we're in trouble. Because we're, we're left out of the loop on that. When it comes to issues that cover both, and, and your functions in the HTC are mostly planning issues, when it comes to us having any kind of say on, on what is going on with the HTC, both you and Brian should be excluded from the discussion because you're on another board reporting to somebody else.
No, be fine with me.
Well, but that's, but that's, that's inefficient. That's inefficient. It seems to me you're.
I'd be happy to be excluded from that.
Can I make a suggestion?
The efficiency of this would be to have the authority as the planning board.
I, I, I gotta tell you guys, you sit here and talk about all the things you should know about, all the reports you should be getting. I don't know who you think is going to do all this work for you. We have a part-time thirty-hour coordinator who is overwhelmed. You guys are saying, well, I want this report, I want that report, I should have this. I don't know what are you gonna do?
May I, may I make my observation? What bothers me about the report that's come out, that you were leafing through, the, the study from the MDC, is it gives an image.
MAPC.
MAPC, of what that corner should look like. I'm afraid that they might interpret it that way. And it's the only objective thing that we have an image on. It's too bad we didn't do a correction of three other images for that corner, which might be a little bit more, as you said, in keeping with what the image that the town would like.
That, that's the purpose of the plan here, is to, to give you, you say, all right, I, I see the picture in there. I like this piece of it, I don't like that. That's the kind of thing that your board, you now, because you now have, all have the same picture in front of you and the same recommendations. You say, you know what, these features are not great for Hamilton.
Well, we were gonna try and beat them to the punch, that's the problem. We didn't give them any.
Jeff, I promise Jeff can speak. Please, Jeff.
I just, I understand what different people are saying here. I just wanna make clear that I, I find no fault in, in any lack of reporting. I think that what may, may make sense is that we include agenda items more routinely on each of our meetings for an update from HTC, an update on anything that any of us have any questions about. I, I just, just put it in there and give these guys a chance to report. But if we have a meeting and the agenda doesn't have HTC on it, and they don't therefore report because they're not on the agenda, we're dealing with things, we're leaving here at quarter twelve at night or whatever.
My apologies, that HTC has been on the last three meeting agendas, but we, we run out of time.
So that, see, that's, that's my point. I don't think it's fair to criticize anyone for not giving us information when we haven't had time to deal with it in our meetings.
I'm not criticizing Jeff, but I have to, I have to live with reality. Sam at the Gulf Station, the tenant, the tenant is a friend of mine, and I respect him as a businessman. He's moving over to Welsh and Lamson's, and then we do this condominium complex or something on top of, top of Lamson's property, and he's on the phone to me, climbing up one side of me and down the other, what are you doing with my property? You know, and.
So my, my point is.
I have to pay Billy the duts.
Why don't we put agenda items, build them into our agenda for HTC and Gulf Station and anything else to give people a chance to talk about at a given meeting instead of, you know, getting to the point now where suddenly we haven't had a chance to talk to it, and then people are wondering what's going on. I think that makes sense. That's proactive.
Yeah, and the chairman has tried to do that, and we'll keep it up, I would think.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not criticizing anybody, but I'm just saying, it's, you know, if we have time, we have time. If we don't, some of these meetings, we just go till late we don't.
Do you, how do you feel about the reporting to the selectmen versus the planning board?
I wasn't here when HTC came, well, I was in town, but I, I wasn't aware, I wasn't involved in it. It is what it is. I look at it, it's established. I don't think we have.
It's not established, it's pretty young.
And Rob, we, Rob, the other, they, there's two reasons they were reporting to the selectmen.
Yeah.
One of them was they were, they were asking, they don't have, as, as a quasi-public entity outside of town hall, they don't really have the authority to ask for a warrant article. A planning board or a citizen petition or the selectmen can prepare and present a warrant article. The HTC doesn't technically have standing, so they had to ask permission for that of the selectmen. So it was one reason they were before them. In the act that your town meeting voted on, that created their articles in incorporation, annually they are required to report to the board of selectmen on their activities. So that was part of their annual report to the selectmen of what they've been doing, and they were requesting an appropriation of the meals tax to be put to town meeting. So they had two reasons to be there by law.
So would, would it take an article and a warrant to dissolve the corporation and then have them report to the?
No, it would have to go to the legislature.
And any change of that HTC entity would actually, you can modify it in some ways in your town meeting, but then it has to go before the legislature as well, because it has been authorized by your state legislature.
And it's specifically designed to be separate from town government?
Well, who elects, who appoints the board of directors and how, for how long of a term?
The selectmen.
The selectmen.
Their, their staggered terms, they.
One to three, one to three years, and that's specified in the act as well.
So they're appointed by the selectmen?
And I think I have their term, closing dates on their webpage.
You do.
They're funded by town meeting.
Jeff, oh, but you've had your hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I do not speak for the board of selectmen. I speak as one individual selectman. And I can just say in terms of, I think we're getting into semantics where you're talking about reporting, or whatever the case may be. But it is very difficult for me, kind of as a big-picture person, to hear that the HTC is making an offer on a piece of property in town and find out that the planning board has absolutely no idea about that. Okay? So that's, I think, where we're, we're, we're running into conflict. You all are elected by the people of this town. There's a check and balance system in place here that we're counting on you all for. So I think that's where we're getting into, I have a really hard time as a selectman. When I found out early on about the gas station, went to my planning board because I thought you all were the ones that could get in and start these conversations early on. I think what we're all trying to do is get ahead of the curve and get ahead of when Cumberland Farms comes and puts the papers down on the table, because we know a lot of work's already been done, and a lot of that's hard to reverse. The whole idea was, six, seven months ago, for this board to engage with Cumberland Boards, uh, Cumberland Farms, so that we could avoid that conflict. And I'm hearing that for whatever reason, this planning board couldn't do that. So I, I think where the conflict here, guys, is whether it's reporting, whether, whatever the case is, we've got the left hand doing and the right hand doing, and neither one knows what the other's doing. And we're not gonna be able to be successful as a town growing as long as we can continue to do that. And the HTC, I think, is making mistakes if they do not value the planning board. And it's a pain, I'm not saying, I'm not saying maybe you do, okay? The impression is, however, the impression is that it doesn't. Because it's not coming to the planning board and talking about things like Mac Schu's. It's not coming to the planning board about some of these, have you, have you talked to the planning board? Oh, really?
Mac Schu's?
We have, we've talked about McCray before.
Mac Schu's?
The McCray property.
McCray property?
I've never, I don't know why you're talking about it.
I don't either.
I don't know either. That's my point. This is, we've got an Hamilton Development Corporation going out making an offer on a pretty significant piece of property in our downtown, and our planning board has no idea.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, we've, we've talked about it because that's an idea that we've had for at least a decade. But Mac didn't want offers at a certain point, but now maybe he may.
But you made an offer on it?
We came before the selectmen and suggested setting up a straw. At one point, Peter Britton and Mark Johnson and other people were to sort of do it. And I've talked to Mac a number of times. That, we all sort of play different roles in different ways because we wanted to get some control for a parking area in this downtown process, processing.
So what, I don't, I didn't, I didn't know they made an offer on it. What, what's the point of this?
The offer is for Matt Gray's property, his house and his business for six hundred thousand dollars. He wanted to keep, this was a, by, by requirement, you keep this quiet because you're negotiating with a private party.
That's why we had a storm.
You talked about it at the HTC meeting, the last one I attended, as a public member. So I don't know, so why would you hold it from this board?
I.
We're not withholding.
Well, no, but I thought that was your argument, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm just saying, Matt is a very prickly character to deal with. And we went in and out of negotiations. He's walked away from the negotiations. He told us he wasn't going to do anything. He, we were trying to respect his privacy and keep this focused on purchasing this piece of property. We have no plans to do anything with it yet. We, once, if we get financing for it, and if it actually closes, then we will just begin development of a plan for its redevelopment. It could be park, it could be parking, it could be residential, commercial, we don't know.
Who's we?
But why wouldn't you talk to us? Why, I mean, you could just say, this is private information. I, I just, I'm astounded that I wouldn't know about it, that I'd have to hear about it from somebody else.
It's perfectly appropriate to come to this board and have us go into executive session so it stays private if, and it's, if it's, if it's negotiating a price.
Yeah, you've now got it on TV, so.
Uh, you know, listen.
And it's been, it's been on, on HTC's agenda since what, December?
Yeah, this is, listen, again, so let's say you now knew it. What would you be doing differently?
Encouraging you.
I'd just like to know. That's, I'm interested.
Yeah.
I would, I would feel.
We would feel we know what's going on in town.
And so now you do know.
I mean, I have a project. Want me to tell you about my project?
Sure.
I mean, it's just, it should be interesting. It's planning. Hello.
I've been fighting for a sewage study in this town as one of my personal goals for.
Years.
For, for years, years, years and years.
Yeah.
So, and the, the last, the last thing I remember, anything about Mac Schu, was probably two years ago when he was, Mac was at one of the meetings, and he said, my property is not for sale and I will not discuss it until after my wife dies. Well, that's the last I ever heard about it, and I would like to have known something about it. Mr. Derry.
Yeah, I guess this discussion you're having right now is probably one of the points that I wanted to make, that, that the HTC, and should, you should, you should put a warrant article in, not dissolving it. I mean, they do good, absolutely good work, don't get me wrong. And it's more bodies that do things which you probably could use. But maybe you would put into a warrant to change the reporting structure or that portion of whatever the charter was that states in it, and I'm not the lawyer here, but just a, a simple article. Because with the addition of them working through you, rather than after the fact, or you can come look if you wanna see, with them working through you, that integrates your total planning capability. And that was my, my, my first bitch, was that you're, you're getting sidetracked. And you're getting, this group will, doing good work, don't get me wrong, they're doing good work, but you're getting sidetracked and pushed away into corners and pockets and silos or whatever you wanna call them. So I would like to see, you know, you step up and, and have a little warrant change, and maybe the people won't wanna do it. Maybe they'll argue for it, who knows what it'll come to. But at least step forward. There's nothing wrong with the HTC who forms a planning function of working with the planning board as a separate entity, but a reporting entity.
Right, the more reason we should have a planning director who's coordinating all the land use and planning.
Reporting to the, reporting to the planning board. It should be, you guys should be up here and the rest should be the uppers, whatever.
In terms of planning purposes, I absolutely agree. And, you know, we, you know, throughout all this MAPC stuff, we incorporate as much as we can and try to disseminate information to everyone. In terms of, one thing we do and can do by statute is, is purchase property and development if we want, which needs to be, needs to be a separate piece, because those, any development is probably gonna have to come before this board.
Anyways.
Which is why there needs to be some separation in that, in that realm.
But we're only talking about reporting, not authority.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand.
And, because if you're gonna have an overall plan for whatever it is that you're doing, a battleship, you know, the other guy that runs the guns and the other guy that runs the radar, I mean, you gotta talk to each other. And somebody has to tell you when to shoot, okay? And that's what I don't see here, okay? Some guy over here is, wow, I see a high stock it, boom, forgot the cap and was, oh, I don't wanna shoot that one. I'm being facetious, but I, I really do think that one of the first steps in getting so. I'm being facetious, but I, I really do think that one of the first steps in getting some, some teeth into this board, so that you can have an overall plan and integrate things as they come along, is you've got to start bringing these things in, and the HDC and the planning director, I, I probably agree that you need one, okay, that should be under the auspices of the planning board, and so I would start that right up, because you, again, sidewalk, right? A few feet up from that, you've got another problem, which is to pull sidewalk crossing. And just for information incidentally, I have already approached Superintendent Harvey to discuss three things. One is, is a permission for the town to use the parking lot, because we do have school in summer session there, that is the ADA requirement. Two, I believe that there's a liability, if you do allow them, those kids running across the street, can they, you know, is they liable to the school department, if you do put the pool in and you have these kids running back and forth, does it need a light or whatever and so forth? And that's all on New York reverse, but at least, somebody has, somebody has to approach the school officially, that should be you, not me, okay? I've done it because I'm working with the Blue Ribbon Committee, that was just a little sideline, though. Thank you.
Isn't there also a crosswalk problem with the entrance to the playground?
Yes. You now have increased the playground space. All these people coming? The biggest problem we got, there is no parking, because it is a wetlands, and I've double-checked that out, okay? If you take your tape measure, and I didn't get arrested, but I did take my tape measure, and I walked from the edge of the pond out, a hundred feet, there's no parking, that's in the middle of the road where the hundred feet is, so you've got that additional problem, you've got a, you've got a, a boundary line problem, which is going to come up, okay? Because you've been using...
The schooling field.
The schooling, about two acres of the schooling field, which you shouldn't have been using, and so you're out of zoning, whatever. The, the, this, this, this whole thing about this crosswalk, does it need a light, does it not need a light, so forth and so on, ten months of the year, they say you're going to use it, well, wait a minute, school's in session, you're definitely not going to be able to use the parking lot past the summer session period, even if the school says so. So I will be talking with Dr. Harvey tomorrow, as a, and I will bring that subject up, because I would like an answer, or what, what he feels, he's probably going to say yes to illegal parking.
I think the hundred-foot boundary is long, you can have parking probably within fifty feet of the wetlands, and that'll be up to the Concom and...
Well, I don't know, I always thought it was a hundred.
I mean, it's... No, but that's their jurisdiction of review.
Oh, okay.
I figure where it is in town, like twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five mill.
Twenty-five, forty-five.
Whatever. Fifty-foot, no disturbance.
All right, and offer to my op at about two acres, does the planning board know that?
No.
Just one closing thought, now, things like crosswalks, I've been through crosswalks, that's a state highway, who's going to approach the state to talk about crosswalks?
I already have, Ed. I already have. I've already talked to people at the state.
Why are you?
Because I'm your town planner, I'm your staff.
Who asked you to do it, the HDC?
Who asked?
I, I, like I said, I...
The HDC asked you to do it?
There are two, no.
Or the selectmen asked you to do it?
Neither.
Well, how did you?
I have three, I have three plans, three applicants coming in, I said, "We have a plan, we have crosswalk issues, I'd like to coordinate one permit review with the state." DPW gave me the name of the woman he works with in District Four, and I called her up, and she said, "I will help you out." That's what I do as your staff. At some point, you also have to trust staff, that's why you have them.
I, I would say, "You're all right, all right so far, but having gone through crosswalk hell in Essex, I'm very well aware that, that I lost two crosswalks, and I've never been able to get them back, and I'm really irritated with the state about it," but that's beyond the point, is, is, it's their purview, and their attitude is, "It's us highway, and we'll do as we damn please."
Well, that's not the attitude she gave me at all.
My point is, and I criticize you for it in a pleasant way, is that it would have been nice to have a notation from your staff that you talk about, that you have approached the people on the crosswalk, because I've been losing some sleep over it. Not much, but I don't know.
It's, it's our, this is the night we're talking about your plan, this is the first time you had your plan before you, it identifies those things, and sometimes, like...
What point are you talking from?
This one, this one, that was on, you know, it's been on your agenda twice, it's on your website, it's, it's a part of your planning department function, that grant was written through the planning department with Wen, with Wenham's planning department as well.
Can you make a copy?
And she and I, the planner and Wenham, are working together, they very much would like to see a crosswalk at the end of Linden, connecting over by Henderson's, and to finish that sidewalk to your downtown, to open up your downtown, and that's a Wenham piece, but she and I are going to work together, now that we have it in writing, this is what helps us do our jobs.
I, I can't print that thing out.
I told you, I have copies, but I, I need to order some, because they're...
When you get a copy, could I have a copy?
Yeah, I have like three.
My, my, my paper bill is so big that, that... Only Peter has more paper than I have.
Christine, I would say, this is the first time I've heard that this is an accepted plan that we're implementing?
It, it, no, it's just, it's just in write, it just is in write, it's not been accepted.
I know, it was, it was a public discussion, but, but I think the process...
They just presented this, this is their recommendation.
But I think what the planning board would like to know is, when should we be going through the elements of that plan? Because I think there are a lot of things to be discussed in it, some of which I like, some of which I don't.
Well, if, if your board agrees, then Ed can put that on the agenda when we, we have room.
Let's do it.
You, you, no, no, so what's happening here, though, is, the agenda just keeps expanding with more and more items, uh, and we keep falling farther and farther behind, because things get pushed off, so we need to pick what it is we're focusing on, because we want to control everything, but we don't have time to do half the things we want to control.
Well, just recently, there's been a lot of activity, I mean, this planning director is...
Exactly, exactly, we need to be focusing, because everybody's complaining that they don't, they're not informed, they're not in control, they're not managing, but we keep taking on more and more.
I printed the plan out, if that's the downtown plan, but I never knew it was the downtown plan, I thought it was a study.
It is a study, it's not a plan, it was, as she said...
But if we're starting to...
Recommendations.
It's recommendations for...
Is this a draft, or is it there by law?
Do we have applications before the state for crosswalks, or don't we?
Rick, I'll tell you how, it's not a draft.
We, it's, the first time we saw, it's a draft from, we, it arrived on our doorstep, we, I've read it, we've all read it, it has some recommendations in it, some of those recommendations are things that people are thinking about, or actually came into play as, one of the things they presented were design, potential suggested design guidelines that the planning board might want to consider to adopt. We even had, we haven't even had time to have that discussion. It just happened to land on Christine's desk when Cumberland Farms came in and said, "Well, we've got this plan, we want to talk about the design of this plan," and she goes, "Guess what? Here's something you want to take a look at, it has some recommendations for potential design guidelines." This stuff's all dynamic, it's happening faster than we can keep up with this.
Rick, there is a solution to that, two fellows down South Salt, there's a, they were buying watermelons in Miami and selling them in Atlanta, and they was paying for a dollar from them in Miami, and they were selling them for a dollar in Atlanta, and they said, "What's our problem?" And they solved it by getting a bigger truck and driving faster. Now, with that, we've got a minutes to approve, everybody's read the minutes for February fourth...
Are we not doing the zoning bylaw?
No.
Two thousand and fourteen.
I don't know if I, I, I put the minutes on there, I don't think I sent them to you. Only because I, I had some, there was a long conversation, and I wanted to double-check how I quoted people.
So we'll reprove them next time.
Yeah, I think I did not send them to you.
The zoning bylaw.
What about this own?
I'm sorry, number four, board will discuss a plan to revise several bylaws, but revisit, revisit, I don't have my class of my board here, I'm sorry.
This was one that, Ed, I asked you to put on, we've, we've had a few things on the agenda, and in particular, there's, there's two things that I've been working on, and I'd like to have your board have a fall town meeting for zoning, and the accessory, accessory units and apartments, we've talked about revising it, the zoning board's been on board, the Affordable Housing Trust would like to see us consolidate the four laws into one. I gave you the materials for January, you got busy talking one night and didn't delve into the details, you bumped until February, it keeps getting bumped, but the accessory units, it's something the zoning board would like to see resolved and, and amended and updated to help people with housing in this town, so that's one bylaw I would like to work on, and we have...
Does it have to go to town meeting?
Yes.
Fall.
A fall town meeting.
But wait a minute, wait a minute, isn't the fall town meeting a special meeting?
They tend to be more...
It's not the annual meeting.
Correct, the annual meeting in the spring is usually budgets.
And, and the special meeting should not, you know, this may not be grounds for a special meeting, in other words, special meetings are supposed to be for emergency-type issues, this is not an emergency-type issue.
No, we do zoning all the time in the hospital.
I know we do it all the time, it doesn't mean it's, it's correct to do it that way.
I think that, as far as I know, that they have a draft date.
It's not a town, that's what I'm saying, it's a special town meeting.
Right.
You want to chime in to, on this one, Jeff, because I think, as a selectman, you should have some sense of what's a special meeting and what's an annual meeting.
Well, no, I think you're right, and I think there's more of a focus on, on, on looking at that, we, we've gotten into the trend where just automatically, every six months, we're, we're going to a town meeting.
Yeah.
I think people want to revisit that and go back to the more strict definition of what...
But you'll get more people turning out if we put a couple of zoning bylaws on there, so.
Whatever the, the selectmen decide, at the next, at the next town meeting, I think we could be ready with a couple of zoning recommendations, and one of them will be the accessory unit bylaws, I've been working on it, I'll continue to work on it, the other one is what's recommended in this downtown plan. They're recommending taking the Willow Street overlay and applying it to the entire business district, with a few conditions, they would like to add a design review component, and there's also, they're proposed in this plan, he, he recommends a density of eight units per acre, which is the density that you have in your downtown area right now, and actually, your Willow Street overlay doesn't have a density at all in it, I don't know if you noticed that in your bylaw, the way it's written.
Who's "they"?
This is just the, this recommendation from this plan.
I don't know what you're talking about.
But essentially, in order to promote development, economic development and housing in the downtown, you've only allowed that mixed use, whether you have commercial on one floor and residential on top, in four parcels. Other than that, any business owner can only have one apartment above, not two, not allowed. So this would enable, since we've denied a couple of people the opportunity to expand, partly, some of it's due to septic, and some of it was due to your bylaws.
Or not elevators.
Elevators is a different feature, that's, that's usually money that, that sends that going.
I know, but the, some of the blocks that wanted to put apartments upstairs, we said they couldn't do it, because there was no facilities for...
An elevator.
Amicap access. And until we get a septic study, it doesn't seem to me we have much to, to talk about.
Well, the, the bylaw, I mean, the septic, again, that's a different issue than your bylaw, this is a use issue.
I would recommend that we can get these issues out on the table, not coming in cold and getting a discussion at the meeting, but introduce it earlier, and you've got a number of things that you've been working on, and you have a lot of notes, I think you ought to send us some sort of a schematic, or these are the questions that we're wrestling with, the, you know, the, the new housing apartment bylaw, I've got a lot of experience with it, I'd love to, to go back and forth.
Work on the, I mean, I'll, I'll take, you know, usually I take one or two people to help me with, you know, on the side, working on a project with bylaws, Claudia has come in to sit down on the accessory units, but we need to get it back before your board. You do have a bunch of permits coming through, you'll be very busy in the next two months with permits.
We can meet with that outside of this.
But at some point, this summer, I would like to have you do some public, some discussions, and then the workshops for zoning.
Well, I'd just like to get an outline of the issues.
I've got, yeah, I, we've got, I've got a bunch of stuff that she gave me, because the, the accessory thing is just so, there's so many iterations, what's an apartment, how many units, refrigerator, stoves, whatever, it's, it's complicated.
I know.
So, we can work, well, we can work on it outside of this, with her.
Have you got the demolition delay bylaw?
And the demolition delay bylaw.
The demolition delay has three or four questions that need to discussion in front of a, a crowd.
When you find a place in our calendar, we'll put you on it.
It can go with these, you know, but I think this summer, we've got to realistically dig into a couple of bylaws that you've talked about, we've begun the work on them, and one of them, again, it's, it's worth reading through this to think it through, there are some recommendations here, you might agree or not agree, so.
And that's on top of Canterbury Brook.
Gold.
Cumberland Farms, and patent, and the pool.
Right.
As I said, we've got way too much on our agenda to be able to handle any of these competently, so we need to be picking priorities.
I, I think a big question in my mind about the patent thing is that they want to bring something, a developer before town meeting, to the town meeting, and there is no real organized committee to review the various options, and I tried to point this out in the Patent Advisory Committee meeting, you know, there isn't enough time to even compare and contrast applications, which are due when, like, two weeks or something.
So, anyway, let's not go down that...
But the planning board isn't going to have any say in it.
I understand, I understand, I understand, there is so much going on, this is why we're all having trouble keeping on top of all of it, because it's all evolving so quickly in different forums, we can't even, we, we have a hard time reporting, because it's happening so fast, we're catching up with it, you guys are going, "Well, what the hell's happening?", and it's happening outside, things that we don't know going on, and it's like, it's a...
Very easy solution.
Yeah?
We do it all the time with this school committee. You've got enough bodies, get some more.
No, you, but you...
Women, you have the point, you have as a board the right to, to appoint a subcommittee.
No, 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 stop. What you have at the school committee is a professional management staff that actually works full-time to manage the enterprise, we don't, so, that's the difference.
That's not what I'm suggesting.
Uh, we could have a zillion subcommittees, we still have the same problem.
So you allow your subcommittee that you appoint to go handle the majority of the shoveling, you bring back the topics, and you vote on them, come on, that's setting up an organization, that's setting up a, a structure.
Right.
So don't tell me you've got too many, because you're just a little town, and you've got all these people.
Fine, that's, I guess the board members would be happy to set up and volunteer for some things.
Well, in fairness to that suggestion, we did that with the first Canterbury Brook application. Peter assigned, Rob and I to do, handle the traffic aspect of it, and I forget who else was handling what else, but Rob and I went out and met with the police chief, and, and the traffic study part of it was, was well-done and, and well-appreciated and handled by us as a subcommittee.
That's true.
So there is some thought there. I'm ready to go home, but...
Well, the last one's the discussion of capital, that's number two.
Number two, discussion of budget and capital overlay.
Oh. At the last meeting, I had mentioned to you that that $12,000 holdover from the 2004 master plan was going back to the general fund, unless you quickly act to repurpose it in some way.
And I would like to see you go and do an electronic compilation of all the paperwork that's upstairs, or as much as you can do upstairs, I mean, it's a lot of work to do that, but you've got to get started in some way, because at some point, because of holding all those files, which nobody's going to be able to access pretty soon, because it's very confusing, if we can put it into a computer, I think you're going to be way ahead of the game.
Claudia?
Can we, could we, could we at least target it for, I mean, if we lose you, and they have this new director, could we keep that fund?
It's not staff, it, it was a capital item, and it...
Well, it has to be a capital.
It kind of has to say a capital item, but it's, you know, it's not, it's not personnel.
All right, why don't we just repurpose it for zoning bylaw reorganization and that can be the placehold and then we'll decide what we want to do with it.
That's a good idea.
That was the most brilliant thing, you said.
You want to make a motion to, I mean, like I said, that the finance director...
Make it a motion.
I make a motion that we repurpose the capital outlay budget for zoning consultant to reorganize our zoning bylaws.
Before we make any second, I'd like to hear what Christine has to say about...
Well, I, like I said, upstairs in Town Hall, we do need, I mean, records management, they've had the structural engineer here a couple of times. And nobody of the other people that work up there has the time in their day to consolidate border health, building, Concom and planning files. None of us do, unless you're paying us to come in on a Saturday and I don't think anybody who works here wants to come in on a Saturday to do filing.
But that's a town, that's a town management function.
It is.
So, why we would, the planning board would appropriate, I understand the problem.
It's town money. If you talk with some of the people in town, they would say that money was given to you by the town. It's in your master plan to consolidate and coordinate functions and it's town money, so...
Yes, for studies or results, which is what we...
I have a motion on the table, there is no debate. There is a second to that motion, we either vote on it or not.
No, we've got discussion at this point.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Discussion, any discussion? Another discussion?
Who seconded it?
Peter.
Peter did, okay.
Polls in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.